Can we give everybody? We're gonna take one minute, one minute we'll get started, everyone. Okay. The municipal planning commission for April the 11th, 2024 will now come to order. Mrs. Blankenhorn, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Starr.
Here.
Mr. Sawyers.
Here.
Mrs. Ellsworth.
Here.
Mr. Hawkins.
Here.
Mr. Swallow. Mr. Deal. Mr. West.
Here.
We do have a quorum.
Okay, before we get started on the agenda items, there is something I usually read before we get started here, and it's just a reminder, everybody please silence your cell phones if you have electronic devices as well with you. As a reminder here today, the purpose of the municipal planning commission is to balance the public good with private property rights and interests. Also, the commission carries out all other powers and duties conferred upon it by the city of Mount Vernon's zoning ordinance, or other city ordinances, and the laws of the state of Ohio. This is a public meeting and there are rules of decorum we follow. We are committed to the democratic process, individual rights of expression, robust debate, and tolerance for differing viewpoints. The following general rules of civility are expected, including addressing others in a respectful manner, no insulting, personal attacks, intimidating, or offensive communications, no harassment, no willful destruction or damage of property, and no disruptive behavior. Please silence all cell phones and other electronic devices and refrain from private conversations during the meeting. If you need to come and go throughout the meeting, please do so in the least disruptive manner possible. Again, the purpose of this commission is to oversee that the law is followed and planning concurs with which the spirit of those laws and regulations have been adopted by the city of Mount Vernon and the state of Ohio. So, with that, commission members, we have, we don't have meeting minutes, do we? Mrs. Blankenhorn?
Yeah, we should, sorry, it's not on the outline though. So that would be... March 14th.
The March 4th minutes, the approval of March 4th.
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth minutes.
Is there a motion to amend the agenda to include the March 4th meeting minutes approval?
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth, I beg your pardon.
That's my script.
Is there a motion to, I'll ask you, is there a motion to add the approval of the meeting minutes from March 14th to the agenda? Is there a motion for that?
It's been moved.
It's been moved and seconded for the addition of the approval of the March 14th meeting minutes. Any discussion? Mrs. Blankenhorn, call the roll, please.
Mayor Starr.
Yes.
Mr. Sawyers.
Yes.
Mrs. Ellsworth.
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins.
Yes.
And Mr. West.
Yes.
Then the chair will entertain a motion to approve, well, regarding the meeting minutes from March 14th. Is there a motion to approve?
It's been moved and seconded.
For the approval of the March 14th meeting minutes, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. They are approved. Okay, we have one item on the agenda for this afternoon, and we'll have Mrs. Blankenhorn read the agenda item and we will, we will go from there.
2024 MPC 0640 Vernon View Drive parcel number 66-07961.000 zoning amendment.
Thank you. Who wishes to speak, to describe this project? Sir? If you would, I think we've got a placard there for you to read before you offer any testimony.
My name is Clint Hura, my address is 2344 York Road, Timonium, Maryland 21093. I affirm that my testimony is truthful to the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God, under the penalty of perjury.
Welcome Clint, what can you tell us about the project here?
So, I already said my name, so I started with that. I'd like to thank everyone for the opportunity to present and discuss a proposal for the PND zoning amendment this evening. We know that there's a history with the property over the last couple of years with some unwelcome development plans being presented. We'd like to start by saying that we're a different developer, in which we have studied some of the previous plans, as well as a lot of the comments that were provided through the previous hearings, and we'd like to thank that our goal is to present a realistic plan that accounts for most, if not all, of those, and make a comprehensive plan that fits into the development, which I think we've done for the city of Mount Vernon, as well as Knox Counties, you know, per some of their comprehensive development plans, as an infill lot for the development. So, to start with the parcel, as you know, it's right off of Vernon View Drive, I think everybody's pretty familiar with where it is. The previous plan, I think that was prevented, presented was for all rental townhomes through the community, so with the suggestions of that, we've looked at it to do a PND, so that we can do a mixed use in the, to do single families up against the single families, and a but some multifamily up against the other zonings in the area.
Can you kind of walk us through it a little bit here, or does somebody else can?
Yeah. Yeah, this is a good one here. So, as you come in on Vernon View, you'll see, you come down, there's 46 single families, that'll be off of the main corridor, as well as one circle to the north of the property. The roundabouts will go through and up to the top of the hills, where it'll kind of come through the multifamily, and then to the northeast of the property, we'll have some townhomes up on that top side, as well as a clubhouse, community pool, and possibly some sports courts or playgrounds, depending on what we need to meet the planning, development rights.
And the num, can you, the numbers that you're talking about, just, everybody?
Sorry, it's 46 single family, 150 multifamily units, and 24 townhomes.
And the single family, those would be for rent, or they would be for sale?
For sale.
For sale.
Yep.
So owner occupied.
Correct.
Thank you.
And we're working with a local builders label, that's looking to be the developer on the property for the singles.
Okay, very good. Does anybody have any questions for Clint? Okay, we'll have, if you want to just hang tight, we'll, we'll go through.
I'll be here for any questions.
Very good. What we will do now is we will go through a, ask anyone who wants to speak on behalf of this first, and then we'll go who wishes to speak against this, and then any general comments, and then we will, if there is anything that anyone says that you'd like to come up and address afterwards, we'll have, like to have you come back up and address that, that's okay, so. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on behalf or in support of this project? Is there anyone who wishes to speak against this project? I see three hands, four hands? If you, if you plan to speak, please let, show your hand, so we can get a feel for who's gonna do that. Why don't we start, right here with this gentleman, well, if it's okay, we'll go back this way, and then we'll start over here with you, and we'll go back that way, okay? So, sir, if you want to come up, we'll have you read that placard there before you offer any testimony, and you have up to four minutes to make your comments, okay?
My name is Ronald Holman, I live at 21 Upland Terrace. I affirm that my testimony is truthful to the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God, or under the penalty of perjury.
Welcome.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak, Mayor Starr, and all the staff, and to all the brothers and sisters of this beautiful tree city. Are we asking the right questions? Will this project enhance or reduce the quality of life in this community? Once this project is started, won't some consequences be irreversible? Is it the relationship between potential runoff and realized runoff, subject to sufficient pond construction, proper maintenance of each of these such structures, and any alterations to the development layout? What will assure that our out-of-state developer or manager will due diligently maintain maintenance on these ponds, retention ponds? Who would be responsible for these ponds constructed, or ponds needed, if the project is abandoned before completion? Will the city be responsible? Does not the city being responsible mean we, the people, are responsible? Will stormwater costs show itself on the groundwater assessment on our water bills? What are the plans that will be, and what will the cost be, to improve State Route 768 to handle the extra traffic? If this project is on the ballot in November, would it pass? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, who was, was there someone in the row behind Ronald who wanted to speak? Susan, you want to come on up? Again, we'll have you read that placard, and then.
My name is Susan Delozier, and I live at 10 Fairway Drive. I affirm that my testimony is truthful to the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God, or under penalty of perjury. Well, I thought we had this mostly settled last year, until at almost the end of our discussion with Joshua Williams, somebody said, "Oh, would you consider a PND?" Well, of course, he jumped on that. So now we have a new plan, with 46 single-family, very small homes, and over 200 rentals. I think this is worse than the last plan. So, I'm not gonna go into detail, because there are lots of people over here who have lots of details, but here's some of the things why we're, we're upset about this. The rentals, 200 of them, the density of the rentals, the damage it would do to Upland Terrace, the fairways, Woodland Drive, even points north. You know, it's a, it's a given that our property values are gonna go down. If I was looking for a new home, I would, I would say, "I'm not living across the street from that." So, this is gonna be short and sweet, we don't want it there, and frankly, I don't think, I don't think it's good for Mount Vernon. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else on this side of the room? Yes, sir, come on up.
My name is Greg Benson, my address is 1116 Beach Street. I affirm that my testimony is truthful to the best of my knowledge and my ability, so help me God, or under the penalty of perjury. I live on Beach Street, and with the new Beach Street extension coming with the police station, adding to the traffic flow, I figure that my street is gonna get a tremendous amount of traffic already. I, when we did the first addition of this, I explained that I have, it's normally, I get 16 to 20 cars backed up on my street, it's even hard to get out onto my street, to get onto my street, off of Koshakton Avenue, oftentimes it's hard to get onto my street, to even get out of my parking driveway, onto Beach Street, it's hard to get on. Now you add this kind of traffic flow, it'll be almost impossible to get onto there, there's no traffic pattern, the streets don't show any extension after the end of these. What do they have, whether your circles, your roundabouts, what do they go to? Also, the ponds, your retention ponds, what do they go to? Are they a lake? Are they a pond? Do they, are they a mosquito infestation? What is the control of those? I'd like to know what those are gonna bring into our community, and who's gonna control and, and oversee those? That's my questions for them.
Thank you. Who was next on that side of the? Yes.
Afternoon, I'm Jeff Doup.
Jeff, thank you.
My address is 1 Upland Terrace, right by the pond, the first one. I affirm that my testimony is truthful to the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God, or under penalty of perjury. I'd almost like just to have a conversation, could we have a conversation, or we have to just?
You have to address.
Would you just speak?
You have to speak.
I just have to speak, just give a statement? Okay. I want to ask him, has you walked a property? Has any of you guys walked a property? Have we looked at it and seen what this is gonna do, what, what we're looking at to train? The proposal meets all of the bare minimums. I looked at the statutes, and what he's turned in is the bare minimum. Is that what we can expect? The bare minimum, the requirements? We had an issue last summer with it not being mowed. I made contact with a crystal, I don't know if you know crystal or not, but I made contact with crystal several times, and nothing happened, but then on June 14th, there was a letter sent from Greg B. Miller to him, telling him to mow. August 10th or 11th, I think, so it was, took two months after they were notified, after they were given official notification, to mow, that they mowed. Okay, the single-family dwellings, I just, tonight was the first I've heard that they're gonna be, Schlebals building them, and they're gonna be sold. I didn't, was that in the proposal? Was that, nothing was in there, we, why were we all thinking it's rentals, rent to own?
I don't know.
From the last proposal?
The last proposal was rentals, it was multifamily.
Multifamily rentals, yeah.
PND is, offers mixed use, so you can.
Okay. As you're going through the packet, it has 9,000 square foot per lot, with a 55, 55-foot road frontage, that means it's gonna be 163 foot deep. I don't know, and I didn't see anything in any of the zoning about that, about the width and the depth. I know a lot of other zoning has that. That means there's going to be 4.8 per acre, and not the 2.4 that's in the proposal. So there's a discrepancy there in that. Okay. And he did only mow after we went to city council, yeah. So they're gonna be, Schlebals gonna build them. It's the same company that goes up to, sitting Crestline, are you from, I can't talk with him, huh?
You can ask him questions, and we'll have them, we'll have them come up and answer any of the questions.
Okay.
They're, they're keeping notes, they're keeping notes of all the questions that you all are bringing up.
So there's three, there's three people here then, instead of just the guy that spoke? Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Up at Crestline, the project that this, that Brooks has in Crestline is a trailer park. I just wanted to make sure we're not gonna have a trailer park here. I mean, and I went up and I looked, they pull them in on wheels, they're trailers. Okay, the pond, 800 foot long, I know, we don't know, I'd like to know the depth of the pond, as far as the elevation. As you're taking your little notes, give me, give me that, where the elevation is, it's gonna go up to like 20, Upland Terrace, and it's gonna be behind, now there's a hill behind my house, at the, at the beginning, so we're gonna have to dig down, and if we hit shale, what kind of a, what kind of a bed are we gonna put in, a liner, an earthen liner? Is it gonna be a dry pond or a wet pond? And I'm assuming it's going to exit out toward Vernon View. How many acres is running into that pond? And I'm assuming this for like a five-year, is it gonna be exit five years, a five-year flood, or?
It's to be 100. Maybe to clarify, like, all of the stormwater features have to be under the current EPA rules, so that is 100 years, it has to handle and treat 100-year storm, and it has to not cause flooding at any of those incremental storms.
Oh, okay.
And so it has to meet all the standard. The other thing is, it has to, if it's a dry pond, it has to drain, and they have to do things to prevent mosquitoes and things like that, so if they're going to build, it has to meet all of the standards that the other developments are meeting, and they have to do a detailed study. We say that in this watershed, we do not allow any exemptions from the EPA rules, and we have not allowed any of the other developers to get any exemptions, and we have contract inspectors, and we have inspection staff every day on these sites, making sure that the other sites are being built correctly.
Okay, so if we hit shale, it ain't gonna come riding into my basement?
The other projects have hit shale and sandstone, and they're, Schlebals and his team are adequately dealing with that.
Okay, but earth or bentonite or something?
Okay. We're well beyond four minutes, but if you want to go, if you have, do you have, what else do you have to ask?
No, not a lot. I just don't want another Cattlemen's Pond in 10 years, the spillway, there would be a spillway then too, if it does overflow.
Those are all requirements by the EPA. I don't know, this is not designed, this is a concept drawing, but we're just speaking, from our table, we're speaking about the minimum requirements the city and the EPA have, that they will follow, anyone who's developing will follow.
So, so we won't have any idea what kind of houses we're gonna look at, or what they're gonna look like, or?
If I can explain the process, this is about the rezoning, this is not about the design, this is not about the, this is, but, well, yeah.
Sorry.
Under the PND, and I might look to my, our attorney for more of an explanation on that, but the city retains a lot more control than an R3 and an R1 zoning, am I correct on that, Mr. Bruin?
Yes, is that if the, if the municipal planning commission chooses to recommend to city council that this property be rezoned to PND, and then council accepts that recommendation and changes the zoning to PND, before anything could be built, they would have to come back to the municipal planning commission and have a full site plan approved, which would require all of the setbacks, all of the ponds, all the engineering would need to be done on the roads, as well as everything else, prior to, for the entire property, prior to them being able to turn any dirt.
Yeah, that's what, that's, that's, the purpose of this is for the rezoning.
Okay, so then, okay, so then when they come back with the plans, do you have a meeting like this, so we can all be here and be part of it?
We, yes, there will be that, there will be that, the first thing.
If, if.
If council approves, if this, first of all, if this body recommends.
Right.
To council, and then if council accepts the recommendation.
Okay, and my next question is, that first part, if you're gonna put residential housing, why are we, why are we gonna rezone it? Why not leave it R1?
Because it's the entire, it is the entire parcel, the tan and the green is all part of one, and so with that allows for mixed use, which is the PND zone.
And the PND has a lot less requirements than the R1.
It has more requirements.
It's the same?
More requirements.
More requirements.
For the residential housing.
For all, yeah, for the whole property. Because if you were to build an R1, you would not have to get a site planned, is that you would just have to meet the minimum requirement. Here, before they can do any building, they have to get the site plan approved.
For the requests that community members are making, it should be preferable to be zoned, so that this board and council require more of a comprehensive planning.
You gotta speak, that makes sense, all right. Did you hear me?
No.
Say that again.
The community members are making these requests, they've, they've brought in some, some concerns, from anywhere, from stormwater retention, from traffic, from general, you know, I don't want to look at it, which, okay, but you should prefer, based on rules and regulations that the city can implement, you should prefer a PND, that way that we can actually implement those things. As Mr. Bruin has mentioned, an R1 has some basic skeletal requirements that a developer has to meet, once that's met, we're done here, that's property rights. At a PND level, we have more teeth to require more of a developer. So this meeting is about the rezone to a PND. At that point, then we start getting into the nitty-gritty of a development plan, all right? This is just a fun drawing, all right, until then, until it's rezoned, then we have a whole process beyond that. So that's just a general, kind of the idea of this.
Mr. Carr?
You may be hearing before I, well, my name, Don Carr, 4 Upland Terrace. Before I begin, you've probably hear some murmurs back here, that this PND concept gives more control to the city, that's absurd. People are saying, "How can you approve a rezoning without knowing what's going on?"
I believe that Mr. Carr did not read the.
He didn't read the statement.
You need to swear yourself in, Mr. Carr?
Oh, I'm sorry. I did, you have my name, thank you. I affirm my testimony is truthful to the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God, or under penalty of perjury. So, that, my point, it's like getting the cart before the horse. You don't know what's going in here, but yet you want to approve a rezoning. I feel like I'm having a Yogi Berra moment, if you're old enough, you know the saying, it's like deja vu all over again. You have received emails that are a part of the record, you've heard individuals speak, you'll hear more tonight, with the same or similar concerns as they delivered 11 months ago, when you denied the R1 zoning request for the same property. Not much has changed, except the PND request versus the R3. Same issues, increased traffic flow on Vernon View, making it difficult to get out of our nearby streets, 500 more vehicles trying to enter Vernon View, Koshakton intersection, one-way in and out of the development, water runoff, destruction of 30 acres of forestry, all rentals, except it was clear tonight that we didn't have information that states that those homes will be purchased. No available purchases. I'd like to remind those who were not on the commission 11 months ago to hear the first request, that 300, a 373 signature petition was submitted last year to, of residents that did not want to change away from the R1 single-family district, currently designated for the property. The petition organizer said they could have collected 1,000 signatures against this proposal. Today, many feel the new application is even less acceptable. There's very little detail provided this year, a high school student with a simple architectural CAD program could have done what we see on the current application. There is more attention to the filing of the application, given the copy of the deed transfer, than this project will affect the quality of life for Mount Vernon residents. Last year, the developer stated that 232 dwellings would be built, this year the number in the application has now been decreased to 220, creating again density housing. The build-to-rent BTR push that started after the housing stock market crash of 2008, took advantage of the lack of new construction home startups. Wall Street investors groups saw a golden opportunity to flood the market with home rentals. Again, we understand, but perhaps would change, this is not a unique story to Mount Vernon. Last year, Marysville denied a zoning change that would have brought 300 rental homes to their. Last year, Marysville denied a zoning change that would have brought three hundred rental homes to their city. Ohio lawmakers have been in discussion and to curb this predatory home building that denies residents an inventory of single-family owned homes to buy. It has been documented that over one, that over fifty percent of the homes in Mount Vernon are already rentals. Councilman Severance delivered an important message to his fellow council members Monday night, which I think also is appropriate to repeat here. Mr. Severance said that, one of his life saving, sayings was, "Live without regrets." He went on to say, "I wanna make good decisions the first time." I believe he was referring to his responsibilities as a council member when he said, and I quote, "I don't want to look back twenty years and have regrets about decisions I made or didn't make." That's the position this commission is in today. This request to drop the R1 single-family land development in favor of building high-density rental is not what Mount Vernon needs. This rezoning recommendation decision and its consequences should be taken lightly.
Can you wrap it up, it's, it's four minutes, thank you, Mr. Carr?
Should not be taken lightly. The decision, uh, made about rezoning will change the look and character of our community, not for twenty years, but forever. We need and want affordable, single-family homes that residents can take pride in ownership. I ask you, with wise deliberation, deny this incomplete application for a zoning change. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, is there anybody else on this side that wishes to speak? And before we go on this side, can I ask one of you to come up and address the questions that have been provided here? Might answer some of the questions that this side might ask, and then we'll come over to you, okay? Yeah, so go ahead, Clint.
So, thank you for all the good feedback. Yeah, I'll kinda just go back through some of the quick comments, so we can address them quickly, I took pretty good notes. I'm not trying to rebuttal anything, I just wanna make sure we have clarity here from the plan, so anything I'm saying isn't rebuttal to it, it's just to kind of, you know, clarify. So there was comments about smaller lots. Um, the lots are actually the same size as what's on Upland Terrace, so we've actually mirrored those to match those lots. Um, and I heard something about sizing, they're actually much larger than that, they're quarter acre lots. So they're seventy-five by, we believe, if you go to one of the other pages, it actually even has the sizes on the one plan that was submitted. So, again, this is only an overlay for a color rendering to make it a little bit simpler. Might not be on that one, there, it's, is it on that one? Yeah, they're quarter acre lots, so they're seventy-five foot wide. Basically, what we're looking to build there is a thirteen to fifteen square, a hundred square foot house, much like you would see off of beach in these other streets, the, you know, that slave wall is building in the area. What the plan is, is, you know, Mount Vernon and Knox County has implemented some stuff stating that there's like entry-level homes needed in the area. They've put in CRAs to help developers come to the area to be able to present these houses available. Most of the stuff in the area that is being built doesn't meet those requirements. So what we're aiming for here, just for clarity, is to try to meet those requirements of entry-level homes in the three hundred and fifty to like three ninety-five range. So to answer some of the other questions, they stated about, you know, value of homes, we'll actually be increasing the value of homes adjoining those properties based on a square foot to a cost ratio. You know, where, the traffic flow, uh, if we can go back just for a second, uh, there's a lot of questioning about the roundabouts, where do they go to and everything? This isn't on us, I, I hope I'm not throwing anybody under the, this is part of the master plan of the area. So this is given to us by, you know, the town to say, this is their plan for where the, the streets are eventually gonna go to, to create better traffic flow that is having issues off of certain areas. So our implementation of this is only based on what we've been, actually working with Brian and some other team members, this isn't us just saying, hey, we're gonna put some roundabouts to go to nowhere. This is coming in from the city planners. So, you know, I think the ultimate plan, you know, we can talk about later is, you know, as this goes past the DN, the PND process, it'll go to a full development plan, and we'll be bringing that in and working with all the civil engineers, the city engineer, and all the departments to say, you know, what does the traffic study say? You know, does the one that hits the first circle need to be extended down immediately to outflow some of the traffic from the multifamily? Things like that would actually improve the, you know, the movement of traffic in a lot of the general areas. Just, another quick point here, you know, I've read your comprehensive plan very well, and like, one of the major things it states, I noticed that, is over fifty percent of your land is agricultural and farmland. And one of the biggest things they're trying to do is keep, you know, projects inside of the grid, which would be exactly what this land is, is inside of a, you know, infill lot, commercial zoning right near it, there's a lot, it's, it's a, an area there that's not out in the farmland. So just as, you know, no, we were working to meet those requirements, you know, based on some of the things they said. The roundabouts was the traffic, um, the incorrect sizes of the lot. The bare minimum, again, as you, I think you kinda mentioned, was, this is just for the PND initial zoning amendment. This has, those ponds are literally just colors for pond areas, as stormwater managements will be. There's nothing to state they'll even hold water, or they'll be an actual pond, it's just something for the rendering to show where they've dedicated the land for a potential stormwater management facility. As the engineers know, the city, this is gonna go through many more, you know, revisions, come back, go back, back and forth. We have four really good engineers that will make sure we, you know, a hundred-year flood plan is, that is very difficult to get to, you know, these standards, compared to what it has been before. As the mowing, uh, again, I'm a new developer, I'm glad to hear that, I've made comment on it. We'll make sure that that gets taken care of this year on a regular schedule. The trailer park comment, I'm not sure what that was about. We're, this is not a trailer park, there's no trailer park planning there, we don't have any trailer park, I'm not sure what the comment was to. The bed liner and all kinda goes back through the same thing with the stormwater management. I mean, a lot of this kinda goes back to, this is a zoning amendment hearing to take it to the next levels, ask for recommendation, to get it to the next levels, we'll come back, the, the extensive plan for a PND project, it, as they mentioned original, I mean, it is a huge document that we have to provide house plans, colors, schemes, floor plans, I mean, eve- even on the single-family houses, that has to get submitted, which is unlike the R1, correct? The R1, we can put whatever color we want on the houses, as long as we're meeting the requirements of the minimum, you know, density. So just so you know, like, they did mention, you know, the PND, we've got, you know, started with preparation to make sure it would fit into the requirements, it's a very extensive plan. It's gonna go through many rounds of approvals, come back in front of the different boards, and make sure that it's fitting into what, you know, is a cohesive plan for the community. But I don't wanna take too much time on that round, so hopefully I answered some of them.
And hopefully that will, that will answer some of the questions, so I promise you, over here, if you wanna come on up, go ahead and, have.
You have to swear.
You gotta be on the microphone. Okay.
My name is David McCoy, my address is eleven Woodside Drive. I affirm my testimony is truthful to the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God, or under penalty of perjury.
Welcome. Welcome.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, appreciate your time. Thank you, Joshua Brooks Williams, for this effort. That's, and no one at there for sale?
There is no Joshua.
You're not Joshua?
No. To new, new developers.
Okay. So where is Josh Williams in all this?
He is not a part of this project at all. As far as we know, is that correct? Thank you.
But, so, it's not Banksmore?
Well, we're gonna, if, if you can address the panel here, we'll, we'll give them an, we'll give them an opportunity to clarify that when we get all of the other comments up on this side, so, yeah.
What? And I heard somebody else, what were the names?
There was Joshua Brooks Williams. The very top of that hierarchy is Banksmore, out of Baltimore, Maryland. And then there's several, I'm not gonna call them.
Say that again.
Banksmore, all one word. There were several, I'm not gonna call them shell companies, but subsidiaries, one of them being Brooks LLC, which was mentioned, it's actually mentioned in the filing here, isn't it?
I don't know. Anybody else?
I didn't bring all of them. But.
Okay, well, when we get through this side, we'll have Clint come back up and address those, those questions.
But if that's, if Banksmore and that group is not affiliated, then that relieves some of my concerns. Cause they are an investment real estate company. Rental, build-to-rent. That's their, that's their MO. I do appreciate, these will be single-family. The, I guess, do our zoning regulations apply to this?
Pivot over to Rob. PND.
PND is, you're talking about what specifically?
Well, there's a couple of things, but, but if this document applies, that's, that's what I'm wondering.
Well, it depends on the particular.
What document? Yeah, but I can't read what's in your hand. Yeah, these are the standard, this is the prefatory language to the zoning regulations.
Well, this isn't the exact printout from the city website. It's not formatted that way. It's not the exact format from the city website.
Oh, this is Mount Vernon Citizens for Response to Government.
It's not, our, our.
That's not ours.
The way our lettering and numbering is different, so it is not, that is not the exact content.
Well, we'll, and we'll write the questions down, and so, how much, well, go ahead.
Item, item B states that, in the zoning regulations, that encourage proper use of the land, stabilize and preserve property values, which was one of the current concerns, I think you're, you're talking to that. And then congestion, traffic, those kinda things. The other is to ensure for adequate traffic capacity, those kinda things, that's item C. But under that is some regulations on lot sizes for a minimum width of seventy-five feet. Well, according to the drawing, it wasn't. If you scroll down. I get it, don't get hung up on the drawing.
Well, it's fifty-five for that, and then there's ten-foot setback on either side. So it's seventy-five foot wide.
Seventy-five wide, for each lot.
Ten plus fifty-five plus ten.
Okay. So, the lot sizes, total size, met this regulation, as far as I can tell.
Again, this is, this is, this is a preliminary concept, so when we get into a site plan, um, that's a whole other, that's a whole other thing, we would take a lot more luck. These were based on, I understand, Clint, the same lot sizes as what's on Upland Terrace, right?
The, the minimum requirement.
Okay, we'll have to, we're missing, we're missing.
Got it.
We gotta keep.
Okay. When it was in the agenda packet, I understood that this would be up for discussion, but apparently not.
Well, we, we are taking the public comm, this is public comment portion, and then.
But not on specifics.
On the specifics.
Of the plan.
Of the plan, the, the plan is not what is in question, it is the rezoning that is in question. That's what we are gonna be deciding today.
Then, I guess it, it gets simpler than that for me, that from that point, if we allow that zoning, I'm not familiar with the other thing you were talking about, RDE.
Oh, R1.
R1 and R3.
But what would prevent them from doing whatever they want? And you, I guess I'm hearing, is they gotta bring it to you, and then you gotta bring it to us again.
We will do this whole process over again with a site, an actual site plan.
Yeah.
Well, you have specifics.
Actual development.
And then, just real quickly, the other question for you, are local contractors and building materials gonna be used in the project?
Yeah, I know, we got, we got, we need to, if we can just have everybody address their, their comments to this board, and then we'll have you come back, thank you. I know, I know, we'll get to them, thank you, David.
So, and without any more than I know right now, I would, I would vote against changing that. Maybe if I'm better educated on what's being proposed, not a multifamily, not a single family, but what did you call this?
PND?
PND.
That's what this is, that's what is being proposed, is a PND.
Don't know enough about it, but probably, I'm gonna stay opposed until I do.
Okay. Who's next on this, yeah, come on up, and then we'll, we'll come over to you next.
My name is Kim Lumley, and I live at sixteen Fairway Port, Mount Vernon, Ohio. I affirm that my testimony is truthful to the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God, or under the penalty of perjury. I talked to the, would be the same as the service director in Crestline today. The area where their other division is at was a trailer park, and it was atrocious, it was really worn down and stuff. The problems that they've had up there, and they said it's been a learning experience for them, and you folks can call Mr. Spires, uh, he's the city administrator in Crestline, cause this is in the Village Crestline. They were supposed to do, I had to make notes, uh, regularly built structures, and that's not what they got. Okay, there was a CRA tax, they, these are not deeded properties, they were titled, so no one got the tax abatement. Having those kinda issues up there, I think that we need to really look at this, okay? There's some other concerns that, that I've thought about, is there any point in time where these would become low income? Based on your income? Is there any time that these would become, the federal government would step in and say, hey, for this much money, we'll bring in some immigrants for you, and how, fill your houses up for you? To me, that's a large development for a small area. Now, when we were here last time, we talked about building on the outside of the city. These neighborhoods have been established for a lot of years. I got a family member that lives in Maricopa County, and I always wondered why doesn't Maricopa County have a lot more manufacturing and really big growth? They don't want it. So the voters voted down, so they get to stay a bedroom county. And that's why a lot of people move into Maricopa County instead of living in Columbus, and they work in Columbus. I don't know, I know I'm not for tearing up Mount Vernon, what it's been. Intel is two years out now because of problems that they're running into, as far as us needing so much housing. Uh, as Dennis Snyder brought up the last time, there's plenty of houses being built now to keep us on track for the number of houses we have. Are they gonna be given abatement taxes? Cause if they're given abatement taxes for so many years, if I understand it right, then the city doesn't make any money on the taxes, correct? How many homes would be built if we left this an R1? No one's ever told us that, and I'm, I'm pretty surprised that we had this meeting before, and we were never told that that was city plans for those streets. I think we need to be more transparent, okay? We didn't know about the round, we knew about them, we had no idea that that was presented to, to the people that was doing the building and stuff. We thought, at least I was under the impression, that that was done by the builders that was gonna be building. We just want you guys to really consider, because like the other gentleman said, you have a legacy when you leave here, and you wanna, just like the one councilman talked about, and I used to live up in the area where he lives, you gotta look back and see what you've done to your community, and the people up in that area don't want this. So we're gonna ask y'all to vote no on it, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir.
My name is Michael Rednauer, my address is six Woodside Drive. I affirm that my testimony is truthful to the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God, or under penalty of perjury.
Welcome.
I'm pretty nervous. Just this week, on the WOSU channel, the Ohio State Senate Select Committee on Housing was aired. It was the one hundred and thirty-fifth General Assembly that took place January thirty-first, twenty, two thousand and twenty-four. The topic was about rental developments going up all over the place. Cities and townships are asking the state of Ohio for help. It's about how difficult it is to find out who the actual owners are, and how to contact them. Franklin County is having problems, Prairie Township in Galloway is having problems. Franklin County is having problems, Prairie Township in Galloway is having problems. Rents are too high, sixty percent of people need to be subsidized in order to rent. One case in Ohio right now, property managers have stopped paying for garbage to be hauled away. They have so many empties that they aren't getting the kind of money they want. The township is eating the, the cost. Does the city have information on the true owners' names, addresses, phone numbers? If not, you're gambling that the future will be good. Mount Vernon is going hog wild on P and D. The land in question should be, oh, that's cutting the grass, that's already been settled. The developer claims the existing area has senior living and other multifamily housing. Well, again, we was, did not quite understand that there is single homes in here. Okay, but. The traffic. Now, I have questioned the city several times. I bought my property in Mount Vernon, two thousand and seventeen. I picked the R1 area. Love it. Okay? Two thousand and eighteen, I built a house. I had to clear some trees off. I was told the city is broke, they would not even come and cut one limb off hanging over the street so we could make the tree go the other way. They would do nothing. Okay? I've asked for hidden drive signs. Woodside Drive, there's a hill coming up this way, a hill coming up that way. You look, you look, you look, you look, and then you go for it. But if you go too fast on a slippery day, you're gonna end up down in a hollow. Okay, it's not safe, and I think that the city should be able to put hidden signs up, especially if they're gonna put another road coming out just on the bottom of the hill. Okay? And, that's, that's all.
Thank you. Who else on this side of the, I can't see, I can't, okay.
My name is Linda Beck. My address is ten Woodside Drive. I affirm that my testimony is truthful to the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God, or under the penalty of perjury. Dear committee members, thank you for taking the time to listen to my opposition to the rezoning. Although it is clear you may not really want my input, as my letter from the city notifying me of this meeting wasn't received until this Monday. I want to start off by saying this is not the first time this parcel has been put up for rezoning. Just last year, we stood before this committee asking that you not amend the current R1 zoning. More than three hundred and seventy-five signatures were gathered and brought forth, and the rezoning was not permitted. Our feelings on this have not changed. When will the city stop passing these new housing developments? In the past couple of years, you have passed rezoning and permission to build four hundred and seventy-seven units at Liberty Crossing. Lemon Development is a hundred and fifty-six units. The Old Middle School, a hundred and two apartments. Eastern Star has ninety-six condo apartments, and the Rockford Home Retreat is four hundred and sixty-nine multifamily developments. While more housing may have been needed, when is enough enough? When will you pause long enough and switch your focus to the impact all this high-density housing will place on our infrastructure, traffic, roads condition, school system, wildlife, and green space? It is our request that you start considering these things now. We ask that you turn away from the big development and start looking at what is already in place. Start listening to the homeowners, the longtime residents, the people who have lived here for generations and are invested in the character that makes this living here so special. Changing the zoning of another large parcel of land and allowing another high-density complex of small crackerjack box units to go up is not in the city's best interest. These are not the type of homes this city needs. These are not the type of homes those invested in a community stay in. These are a burden. The opposed housing is made for transit living and are not long-term or well-maintained housing options. Keeping the land R1 allows for better long-term helping, housing options, housing that owners want, owners can take pride in and pay taxes on, helping the infrastructure. It also allows for bigger lots, nicer houses, and more manageable population density. This type of housing allows for forces areas to remain instead of being cleared out. This type of R1 housing is the kind I've always imagined being built. This is the type of housing that fits the surrounding area, protects the character of our neighborhood, our property values, and is better for the long-term growth of our small town. And I would also like to add, behind my house, when you say this, your map shows two and a half houses behind my house on ten Woodside Drive. Maybe if you'd flip them the other way and not try to see how many you get in there, it would be a better option for people. And do other people know that the city is planning roads through maybe their neighborhood? Where are these roads coming out at? I would like to know that, because I'm sure if it's going up towards Upper Gilcrest, I'm sure them half-million-dollar homes don't want that road going through their neighborhood. That's all, thank you.
Next.
My name's Robert Beck. I live on ten Woodside Drive. I affirm that my testimony is truthful and to the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God, or under penalty of perjury. What everyone was talking about is, that is the, the crest line. And what is driving our questions is, one, when you say they're family-owned, do the people buy the property? Because in rent-to-own, you, y'all, the, the, the big dogs are, are keeping all the land, and you're buying something to put on it, a, a house. And, and when that, when it falls apart or whatever, you can rebuild it, or you can move on. But when you say single-family homes, are the people really buying the property also? Part of the problem is on one of those other views, you say two-story house, twelve hundred square feet. That's six hundred per level. That's my garage. So twenty feet over, thirty feet over, twenty, thirty, six hundred, times two, a two-story house. And they're going, you have ten-foot, ten-foot house, ten-foot, offset ten-foot, offset house, ten-foot. So that is why, between what that other map says about the square footage, the offsets, and what you have done currently and in the past.
We don't take it all.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
That's the record.
Okay.
Again, I, I, I'm taking you're a developer, and the, the one who hires you is still the same people who own all the property. But those are things I hope we get squared away. So, I would like to help to thank the commission for listening to all of our concerns. Yeah, some things I say have, have already been said, but a year ago, we were here, and yeah, so a year ago, a developer from Baltimore, Maryland, put in a contingent bid on the property as Zero Vernon View. It was contingent on it being rezoned from R1 to allow high-density housing. The zoning change, it was denied. This is last year. People spoke for three and a half hours, and there's a petition of almost four hundred signatures that the current R1 zoning should stay in effect. The Brooks Group bought this property knowing it was R1. If you buy something and you know what it was, you know, if, if you don't want R1, you should have bought something else. They should stay R1, please. The zoning of residential areas should be maintained and kept consistent. For over sixty years, the families purchased their forever homes based on what is next door to them, the R1 zoning, and the status of our subdivision. Changing that zoning on Zero Vernon View Drive is a breach of trust between the family members who bought the house and the city of Mount Vernon. Any zoning change will have a detrimental effect on our family's way of life and stability. Please deny this zoning change because of the following Mount Vernon zoning code. One, the stability and preserve property values. Two, to protect against congested and unsafe traffic conditions. And three, maintain our quality of life. So, I, I showed you all some, some pictures there. They do look like double-wide trailers, and that's, you know, about the buy-in, I've, I've tried to touch base on that. And the ponds, no, there was people that talked about all that runoff from the hill. As, as someone said, have you ever walked the property, seen the property? Well, thank you all, I, I, I hope that you all realize that after this year, you know, twelve hundred to five, fifteen hundred new rentals already in town, we really don't need any more, in, in our opinion. So, thank you.
Who's next on this side over here? Come on up.
My name is Jennifer, my name is Jennifer Shoman. My address is two hundred North Edgewood Road. I affirm that my testimony is truthful to the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God, or under penalty of perjury. In preparing for this meeting, it seemed prudent to also review the draft of the Mount Vernon Planning and Zoning Code that the city's been working to update, with the goal of this document being to accommodate strategic growth, this seemed like a document that should be taken into consideration. The purpose statement on page one has multiple parts, but for the sake of time, I would like to examine A, B, and C as to why I don't think this property should be rezoned. Statement A, B, and C under purpose is as follows. A, implement the city of Mount Vernon comprehensive plan and other policies or plans adopted or approved by the city as they relate to the development of the land. B, encourage and facilitate orderly, efficient, and appropriate growth and development. C, ensure and encourage the proper use of the land to stabilize and preserve property values, to protect against congested and unsafe traffic conditions, to provide safety from hazards such as fire, flood, water, and air contamination, and to guarantee adequate light, air, and open space to all residents, property owners, and businesses in the city. While it is clear certain city members have a vested interest in seeing that this development passes with their collaboration to integrate traffic patterns and roundabouts that fall into the city's master plans, I urge you to closely consider the facts. On the surface, this proposal may seem to line up with purpose A, but these promises to help with traffic concerns are also followed with the qualifier, which will be gradually implemented in the coming years. I'm not sure what coming years means. Do you own this land? Because they already said they don't. How is this truly helpful? As it stands, they're requesting to build two hundred and twenty units with only one entrance and exit. That exit happens to be in an already problematic area. The Krogers and Buffalo Wild Wings complex is already congested and dangerous. Turning left out of Beet Street is hazardous during busy hours, and traffic will only get worse when the police station opens on Saica Road. How are you really addressing these issues, other than adding to the problem if this rezoning passes? How would it be protecting against congested and unsafe traffic conditions as purpose C demands? C also states that the purpose is to ensure and encourage the proper use of land to stabilize and preserve property values. This development does not do this. Living in and around R1 single-family homes is much more desirable than living around high-density, cheaply-built neighborhoods consisting of tiny units in a congested area. I have seen the homes that Brooks Company has put up in Crestline. They boast of fast builds in less than five months, and the pictures of the community looks like double-wide homes lined up right next to each other with cheap exteriors and little variation. This is not the type of community I would like to live or invest in. This brings me to B, encourage and facilitate orderly, efficient, and appropriate growth and development. I ask this committee to seriously review the rate of growth the city is facing with all the new developments it has approved. Do you truly believe that we are currently positioned to handle the projected and approved upon growth? Our schools are already complaining that they're overburdened. Homeowners are struggling with tax increases. Infrastructure in established areas are failing, water lines, gas lines, road surfaces, and yet the focus is still on growth. Can you really claim this is appropriate and helpful, helpful for our city as a whole? Please consider these factors and deny this rezoning request. Thank you for your time.
Next. Mister, oh, you're not talking, who's next on this side of the room? Mister Hillier, if you want to come on up?
I've been the last few times in my life, but didn't expect to be tonight. My name is Mike Hillier. My address is two fifteen East Sugar. I affirm that my testimony is truthful to the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God, or under penalty of perjury. Thank you. I, one, I've made several notes from what I originally typed out, but I don't want to miss this part, and I'd like for these gentlemen to explain. As I sat back there, I went to the auditor's website, and it says this property was purchased by the Brooks Group, May twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three. It lists the owner as Arista Villa. And I'm hearing we're not part of that, something different, but I'd like that explanation a little better on what's different. Thank you. Somebody asked why I'm here. I am retired from Mount Vernon City Council, I've worked with planning for the city for sixteen years. I was here May fifth, two thousand and twenty-three, as a council member, and the developer wanted R3 zoning. You heard from the concerned neighbors on, on that time, several concerns. We don't want rental properties between residential property across the street from condominiums, traffic concerns. How many cars do you think Vernon View Drive can handle? Mister Williams said on May fifth, and I think the date is actually, May fifth was the article in Knox Pages, a plan for a connector road to Vernon View from upper, to Upper Gilcrest. Has that plan been completed with adjoining property owners to the east? Mister Williams mentioned at the previous meeting there needs to be discussion about a stoplight at Vernon View. Have you had those discussions? Couple of questions I have on my own. Is there gonna be a site manager for the rentals? Are the townhouses gonna be rented? Is this gonna be private or public? We hear that several times here in the last months when people are coming in as developers. Difference between gonna be a public or, 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 or private? There's a lot of questions. This plan, commission rejected the plan on May fifth for good reason, it didn't fit. Knox Page's article listed, Todd, I'm sorry, but you quoted it. The goal for MPC is the greater good of the city. Anytime we're asked to rezone, the burden of proof is on the one making the request, he said. Although studies show there is a housing need to make a change show demeratic, I don't see the need for what they're proposing. What's changed? We've got forty-six twelve-hundred-square-foot crackerbox houses. Townhouses, rentals. You know, if Slav Ball would have come right on over the hill and built the four hundred, five hundred thousand dollar houses on the big lots, I doubt these people would be complaining. At the end of the meeting, Mister Ball was heard asking Mister Williams, would you consider P and D? Do you remember that? Uh huh. And that is one reason we're here today. It was done, you voted it down. Please don't vote yes based on, a few may think this is best for the city. You may know this, but when this goes to council, it takes a six-to-one vote to change what you voted on. I think it's Mister Hawkins says, excuse me, President Hawkins of council said it's happened once in the years he's been on council. That's hard to do. That's really hard to do, so it probably ends right here with you guys. Vote this down in the best interest of the neighbors and those who travel to the east side of town. We don't need more of this. Thank you.
Anybody else on this side of the room, over here? Okay, you have not spoke yet, sir, would you, you wish? You have to get up there and, and read the, the placard to swear in.
Okay, my name's Craig Schlessenger. Address is nineteen Upland Terrace. I affirm that my testimony is truthful to the best of my knowledge and ability. I affirm that my testimony is truthful to the best of my knowledge and ability. So help me God, under penalty of perjury.
Welcome.
Everybody's spoken about houses and all the wonderful things, all the bad things. I'm not for the people. I get up in the morning, the only house I see out my window is Mike's house. He's got a beautiful house. The rest of it, I see trees. And what goes along with the wonderful trees is the deer that are sleeping in my backyard, or my front yard, or the animals that come down, the chipmunks, the squirrels, raccoons that the people hate, that, the raccoons will love this because of the garbage. But anyway, I like that. Good chuckle. And then, and the garbage trucks, sixty tons rolling in in these streets. What are they going to do to the streets? Tear them up? Now, there's water going to be running off of there without our trees and the grass and everything else. Where's it going to go? In my backyard? I hope not. I don't know. I think if I had the money, I'd buy the damn thing and fence it off and it's a wildlife preserve. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
One more, is, yes, sir, if you want to come on up, you can, we'll have you read the placard and floor will yours.
My name is Tom Van Vorus. I live at five Fairway Court. I affirm that my testimony is truthful to the best of my knowledge and ability. So help me God, under penalty of perjury. I don't have a lot to say, but you represent me. You, you, or Mr. Ball, you, you people represent me. I haven't heard anybody in these testimonies come up here except the people that are going to build and say, "This is a great idea. We really need it." You're selling us down the road. You open this thing up, and it's like Mr. Hager said, this will never get changed by council. So I don't understand why you're trying to push all this development down everybody's throat. It's not necessary.
Sir, what did you say your last name is?
Van Vorus, V-A-N-V-O-O-R-H-I-S.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else before we, we wrap? Okay, okay, we got three more. So here, here, then here, and then I would like to have the developer answer the questions and concerns that have been, been up here.
My name is Susan Holman. My address is twenty-one Upland Terrace. I affirm my testimony is truthful to the best of my knowledge and ability. So help me God, or under penalty or perjury. And I just thought of this when I was thinking of when this list committee and everything. I am asked last year, was there an environmental impact study ever done on this thing? I live on this. I know what this property's like. It's going to take a major event to try to level this off for individual homes and also apartments and townhouses. And I just wondered, did anybody want to do that before they start doing this? Have you ever walked the land? If you haven't, you should, because you'll see it is not really easy to develop, okay? And I do not want a lot of water coming on the center run. You know, you promised them in the nineties never to have a flood. Is it going to have a flood, is there's going to be a flood there because of not proper planning? Just a thought. Thank you.
You, sir, and then we'll go back. Who was in the, you were in the back, and then, well, I'm going to bring up Clint and his team to answer the questions and, and concerns that have been, been brought up here.
My name is William Brown. I live at sixty-four Fairway Drive. Same neighborhood as you do, Mr. Mayor. I wasn't planning to speak, but I've been listening to some things, and my heart would be troubled tonight if I didn't say something. I think we know that if a zone is changed, then so can a lot of the ideas and the way we do things. I'm not saying that from just my own understanding. I've been told that a lot this week, that once it's changed, a lot of things will change. And that's troubling me because we live in a country today where a lot of things are changing, and we have no control over it. We have to live with it. I came here two and a half years ago as a retired pastor, wanting to live in a community like Mount Vernon, because it was a quiet community. My wife asks me if she can go out and walk around the neighborhood. I say yes, because I feel it's safe. I think those things will change. The gentleman who, the gentle men here who are wanting to build this, I don't know them. I'm not, I've not been told where they live, but I have a sneaking idea that they don't live in our community. And so they will go, they will not have to live with what we will have to live with. And my concern is, I would a whole lot rather look at an empty piece of ground with trees around it and the deer feeding on it, than to have to look at a bunch of homes that are going to be rented by people, a lot of people, and I've had experience for fifteen years in pasting with rentals and how people don't like to pay their rental bills, and what you have to do to make that change. I, for one, am against changing this zoning. I, for one, and, and, and I'm surprised. I did not learn about this meeting until this week. I don't know how it was kept quiet. I'm not accusing anything. I'm just saying I did not learn about it. Last year I was here, this place was packed out. In fact, they were carrying chairs inch by, by the dozens. But we don't have that today. I never dreamed we would be back to this kind of a meeting today. Thank you.
Ma'am?
My name is Carol Harding. I live at one Birdie Drive in the Fairways, and I affirm that my testimony is truthful to the best of my knowledge and ability. So help me God, or under penalty of perjury. And I would like to also add my voice to saying, please, no, do not change the zoning. When I think about how much building is going on in the area, I think especially of Gilcrest Road, and how many cars are going to be added to the traffic pattern we all use, Coshockton Avenue, and to add this many more cars to Coshockton Avenue in addition to what's already coming, I think would be another major hassle that we would all deal with. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Clint, I'm going to give you this chance, and I might call on Mr. Gottke. Did somebody else just raise their hand they want to talk back there? Somebody else? Why don't we have you go, and then I'm going to turn it back over to Clint so we can get this closer to getting on the table for, for a discussion.
Hello. My name's Tom Gardner. I live at fifty-three Fairway Drive. And like the previous gentleman, I did not.
Can you do the receipt? There's a statement down there, please.
I affirm that my testimony is truthful to the best of my knowledge and ability. So help me God, or under the penalty of perjury. So, like the previous gentleman, I did not, I came to listen and learn, not to say anything, but from what I'm hearing, I think it comes down to a binary decision. You can either approve the rezoning and then run the risk of creating a long-term liability instead of an asset for this community. Or you can leave the zoning the way it is and feel pretty confident that you're going to have a long-term door open for the prospect of residential, single-family development on that parcel that's up in question, and not run the risk of having a long-term liability. Thank you very much.
Clint? Floor is yours. If you would address these concerns that the citizens have brought forth, that would be great, and I might do some, might call our economic development partner, Mr. Gottke, up to, to help shed some light on, on this as well.
I'll keep it as simple as I can. A lot of the concerns were along the same lines. Just to clarify, the forty-six houses are for sale homes. So they'll either be sold as lots, they'll be built on. I don't know where all it's coming up with the trailer park and all. I don't own any trailer parks. I've never been associated with that, so I'm just going to go past that for this part. To address a lot of the stuff going on with, with this last part was about the housing, you know, and the need for.
Get a little closer.
Need for housing? Yep, sorry about that. You know, we can only go on statistics really of what's going on in this area from the standpoint of, you know, why some of these things were put into place, and I see some of the concerns about land and all, but like, a lot of the things that are not being discussed is about like, you know, houses, you know, went up forty percent over the last year and a half in, you know, cost. Rental rates went up over twenty percent. And, you know, one would ask, well, why did that happen? Your guys are at a three-point-seven percent vacancy rate, okay? Columbus is only at five. So you have no rental places to move. People have nowhere to go. They have no options, and it's creating some of these concerns that they're having where, you know, maybe communities aren't fixing them up because they have no need to fix them up. As long as there's communities out there, like they're speaking at, you know, they're not picking up trash and all, and they're being done. If you have a three, three-point-seven percent vacancy rate, people have nowhere to move, because if you move out of your apartment, where do you move to? There's nothing available because it's going to be at three-point-seven. So, you know, just some of these things, like, you know, the other thing is the sale is forty-four days, average days on market right now in your guys' community. Like, that's very fast. That's meaning there is a huge supply and, I'm sorry, huge demand and a little supply. So, you know, to address a lot of these, that it doesn't need to be done, I mean, I think you guys know as well as we do, the statistics are showing it needs to be. So realistically, the answer to a lot of these questions is where do you put this? Do you put it here, or do you put it out into an area outside of the city limits that really shouldn't go? So, not trying to go off subject, but there was a lot of back and forth on the rest of it. I just kind of wanted to end with that, to say, the statistics kind of show, you know, what it needs to be. We feel that this is a very good infill lot, or particularly the community rather than another one. So I'm happy to answer more questions, but the rest were kind of just all, I'm happy to answer any other questions as well.
Hold on, hold on a second. We'll, we'll get to it.
So, there were a few names that were mentioned. I wrote down a few questions here, and I want you to just kind of pick it up what some folks were saying. So Josh Brooks Williams, Banksmore Brooks LLC. Do you know those people? Are you associated with them in any way? Is this property under any sort of partnership with them? And in full transparency, can you alleviate the concerns of the people in this room?
So I do know Josh Williams. So Josh Williams, you know, is affiliated with some other entities that we are affiliated with as well. He may have said Brooks Company. I'm not Brooks Company. I think after the previous round, I was approached with this. I've been in real estate and development for twenty-five years. I've won multiple awards for our developments, our neighborhoods, our home, our communities. So I was brought in on that level originally, and I've taken the forefront and have taken over a lot of the shares and ownership. Josh and I are affiliated through Banksmore. Banksmore is a capital-raising company that does the backend financing for some of these properties. It's not the development company on these. So the two entities are completely separate. One, I mean, you have to fund projects, whether it's this project, another project, one raises capital to bring, you know, to a community like this to be able to actually get the project finished. The other one is a developer, which is what I'm here for today, to represent this as a PND and take it through the process if approved, to meet and beat all the standards and, you know, make it a community that's viable.
I have a couple more questions.
Sure thing.
So we're seeing two, just on this, this concept here, we're seeing two very different phases essentially, right?
Correct.
You have, you have a owner-occupied, you know, single-family phase, I would like to call it, and then you have something that does not fit this neighborhood. It is something different. So between Upland Terrace, Woodside, and then what you have proposed here to the left, that fits the, the neighborhood. Off to the side, that is something different. That is, I think you, you get the general vibe out here that these people are a little concerned about that. Is this a two-phase project? What are the phases? How would this operate?
So we're offering it up as a two-phase project. One phase would be the single families, and the second phase would be, yeah, Blink there's part of, should be shown in color, the phase one.
And that will be my next question.
The development work will be done, you know, all at one time?
So let's just pretend, boom, we approve this site plan. That's not what's happening. But let's just.
All the development would be done. It would probably take about six months. From there, the lots would, you know, start to be built on for, by whoever the builder was in the local area. And then phase two would be up in the air to when that could get through the final approvals and everything for, you know, building permit.
And how many units are in phase one again?
Phase one's forty-six.
Do you believe in six months, forty-six units could be built?
No, development, I'm sorry, infrastructure only was the six months. Yeah, it would be a phased-in, probably three-year-plus plan.
Before anybody chokes on anything.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes. The infrastructure would take six months. That's only horizontal. Vertical would be probably three to four years.
Okay. So then, hold on a second, sir. So then phase two, you're just kind of, we'll see how phase one goes.
Correct.
All right. Traffic issues were another thing. So there were, I think, justifiable concerns about traffic issues. And you, you've been involved in development for twenty-some years, yes?
Correct.
You realize that if you come into the city, we will require you to be involved with our NCA?
Hundred percent.
Okay. It's an additional millage on everything that goes on in this property. All right. What have you done in other areas that have worked on traffic calming measures? And, I mean, that's one entrance into a pretty heavily populated area. What are you going to do?
So just to be clear, this is again, concept plan.
Sure.
This is the only thing we're putting out here. We are at phase one. So when phase two, if, if phase two were to come, where it went to a PND approval, we would start doing much more intensive studies, and we would rely on those impact studies and those other engineers and all to advise us, are we overweighted? And why? What is the impact? You know, they're going to go out and do studies on that road. They're going to figure out what it is per hour, what the high peaks are. If they come back and say, "This can't support this," then it's going to go down. Like, it's going to go from one-fifty down to maybe one-twenty-five, maybe a hundred. Could end up at ninety units for a, it'll, it'll be based on what the final, you know, requirements come from the professionals of those studies. And that's the way we've always handled it, and, you know, that's what they're there for.
So what it sounds to me like what you're saying is, you came in with a concept with everything, and then in the design phase, you're going to lower it to what is the most sustainable, marketable thing for this city in particular. What a novel concept. Okay, second.
Just to go on that, the people do not want us to come back with two-hundred-and-eighty units. So we try to go here and have to work backwards.
Stormwater issues were, I read everything that was sent to the city and highlighted the very relevant things. Stormwater issues were one of the most paramount things. Runoff, a real, you are aware that this is, you'll have to work with the city engineering department, and you'll have to meet every Ohio and federal EPA mandates, and if you do not, you will be taken to prison, and I will not bail you out. Okay.
Common practice.
All right. So you also say that you are not responsible for the Crestline property, which several people have brought up here, and I believe we have photos of. Yep.
No idea what that property is.
Okay. What are you responsible for that we could?
I mean, you can look up KNG Equity.
KNG?
As a Nancy, Kathy Nancy Grant Equity.
By writing that down?
KNC, KNGEquity.com.
KNG Equity.
It's our website.
Hold him accountable. KNG Equity. While you're doing that, you're aware that Mount Vernon is proud to be a twenty-plus-year member of the Tree City USA partner, right?
Correct.
All right. Lemon Development, Rockford Development, Upper Gilcrest, pretty much everything that we've done up there. We have required buffering for other properties. You willing to do that for these fine people?
Absolutely.
Okay. We'll hold you to that as well, once we get to the comprehensive development plan. And you'll work with Shade, or, yeah. We are also a Bee City. You going to work with us on that? Shade Tree and Bee City. Okay. Those are all my questions.
Mr. Hillier, was that question answered?
That's what I asked about the, the exit on the back of the property. That's when you confirm?
Back of the, the?
On the east side of the property, you saw an exit to the right of the street.
Yep, where's that going?
Is that agreement made?
That's-
He pointed out?
No, we see what you're talking about.
Just talk about the previous plan that's on his-
We can't have him speaking off mic.
Yeah, we can't have him, okay.
Well, do you want me to just speak it into the record? Is that good?
Yeah.
Mr. Hillier has asked about the east, east exit that is listed on this concept drawing here. Have you talked to a property owner? Have you?
So, and typically in a master plan like this, it's put in so that if it were to ever want to be extended by the city, it's available. This isn't saying that we're putting it in because it has to go somewhere. If the traffic studies were to show that, then we would maybe have to present that and go find that, work with the city. But as of right now, it's just in the master plan. So it just basically states that if we do develop this, it has to confide with what, you know, or comply with what is presented so that as that plan does, if it does go forward and get implemented, that it's already part of the plan. So as far as compliance, that's why it's there. And depending on how the development process may go, would really dictate that at the further date. Hopefully that answers-
Does anybody have any more questions for Clint? Does anybody have any more questions for Clint?
Nope.
Well, hold on.
It's the commission.
Okay, well.
Have him sit down.
If you want to just have him sit down.
I can, I can ask one of the questions for people. They ask about the, if they walk away. And I think the question is, are you willing to post the bonds that are required by the city? Sorry, so.
I just told you to sit down.
So, you know, this is all standard practice. There's a letter of credit, cash or a security, surety bond that's issued anytime, any kind of development work is done like this. It ensures the city that if we start sewer design, stormwater design, and we don't do it, they have the ability to come in and do it without us. So it's, it's standard across pretty much every municipality I've ever been to, and yes, we would do that.
Thank you. I'd like to this time make, bring Mr. Gotkey back, back up here. Not back up, but up here to address some of the, the comments regarding housing. And the, there's a notion that, that this administration is just committed to getting more and more housing. This is not behind any, this is not just blindly, that we make, we make decisions and take recommendations based on science. And that's why I would like Mr. Gotkey to explain the housing study and the growth, what's happening with the reshoring of jobs to the United States and the growth of the Columbus area. Can you talk a little bit about Mount Vernon, Knox County, because of what's going on nationally here?
Sure thing. I'm going to read this green thing first, though, so I don't forget.
Yes.
My name is Jeff Gotkey. My address, 507 West High Street, Mount Vernon. I've heard that my testimony is truthful to the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God, or under penalty of perjury. Thanks for the invite. I spent some time doing a little research today. Basically, what I want to do is just provide you, like the mayor said, with what's going on locally and regionally. This is a tough choice for you all, particularly the three of you that are volunteers on this board. I, I don't want the audience to forget that three of them are volunteers, right? So they're our neighbors too, and my neighbors as well. So let me give you a demand picture, and then I'll give you a short supply picture. So hopefully to maybe fill in some of the gaps, so you can help to make your decision wisely. From a demand side, Columbus, the Columbus region, which is 11 counties around Franklin, is the only region of the state that's growing. It's added about 600,000 people over the last decade, decade and a half. The rest of the state is either staying stable or losing population. So Columbus is pretty much the only reason that's growing. Columbus is not building enough houses. It's something like 11,000 housing units short. It just can't build it fast enough. The Columbus region itself is building fewer houses today than it did in 2008 before the housing crisis, with about twice as many people in the region. So there is an acute housing shortage across the Columbus region. It's very difficult to build houses in, in the, in the region. Some of that is due to onerous zoning regulations on the part of municipalities. Some of it is due to just market conditions, interest rates, material costs, et cetera. So it's very, it's very expensive now. Knox County, since 2010, grew about 3%. So that put us in the top 18th, put us 18th out of 88 counties in the state. 3%. We wouldn't think that was a lot, but since everybody else is shrinking more or less, that we count as a growing county. That's pretty modest growth. In the last three years, Knox County's added 200 people per year for the last three. So modest growth. The city, on the other hand, different story. Since the 2010 census, the city of Mount Vernon has lost population. Now, it was only like 10 people or something, so you can just basically count that as staying the same. It averaged minus two houses built in the last, since 2016. So basically, like, the hose of housing in Mount Vernon was kinked up. And so recently, that's been kind of unkinked, which accounts for some of the large volume of, of developments that we've seen. So to that point, Knox County, not just Mount Vernon, Knox County itself, if you average it, is short about 400 housing units a year. And that was done from 2020 to 2030. So if you account for all of those, we're getting close to building the average number of how, that's average, right? So if we kind of go above the, like, the band is like 260 to 520, right? So if we go above, if our growth hits above that, then, you know, we're going to need more. So we're about average. If you look at unit type, by my count, and I was listening when the nice lady read off exactly the exact number of units, I was just rounding, but, so it's about 1,380 housing units that have been approved in the last couple of years. That's Rockford, Highland Real Estate, Schlebaugh, Eastern Star, Lemon Development, and the former school property. Those are all in various stages. They're not just all going to show up at once, and, you know, stick-for-sale signs up. About 1,000 of those are multifamily for rent. 250 or so of those are going to be age-targeted or age-restricted, so we kind of take those off the board a little bit, if you're thinking about market, market rate. So that leaves about 750 market-rate rental units that will come on the, on the market by 2028. Okay. Questions about supply, before I hit demand real quick? Okay. Demand real quick. People like different types of houses than they used to, right? The post-war, mid-century subdivision is kind of falling out of favor. Those houses tend to be a little larger. They require a lot more money to maintain. They require more work to maintain. People don't like that so much anymore. Younger people and older people both like smaller houses with less maintenance. So that's why you see kind of the push for tiny houses or smaller houses. And they like a mix of uses, right? So they don't, so the whole, like, Euclidean zoning thing, where it's like, single family here, commercial here, industrial here, 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 here. We have all these colored zones on a map. That's sort of falling out of favor. People want to be in mixed areas with lots of things to do. You know, granny lives over here in a, in a condo, and she's walking distance from my house, and there's a store down the street. Like, they like to be more mobile and have things closer than the last, you know, 60 years or so. This is generally. My particular preferences, our particular preferences are different, may, you know, are different, obviously, but national trends. And then, from a job demand standpoint, just yesterday, we had an announcement of a company that's going to bring 200 jobs to Heartland Commerce Park. And there are still a number of workforce vacancies among local employers. Some of it is directly related to housing. Employers will say, housing is now an economic problem because they can't attract workers to Mount Vernon. We're pretty far from places, right? You've got at least a half an hour commute if you live in the far northern reaches of Columbus. And people will work here, and they'll live in Sunbury, let's say, and then they'll get tired of the drive and find a job only 10 minutes away instead of 30. So there's just nowhere for large employers, for any employers really, to put their workers. And so it's now becoming an economic problem. Just yesterday, I was visiting a healthcare place, and they said, I need two nurses. And that's going to be the difference between me having an extra shift in my rehab facility or not. That's 24, 24, 12 something like that, dozen and a half beds that I have to keep empty because I can't find two nurses. So I can, you know, give you all kind of examples where it's just three here, four here, six there, but that all adds up and creates some real kind of economic workforce problems. So you guys have a hard job. That's a lot to weigh. I wanted to give you kind of the, the trends and the facts, and you can weigh all that with what they're saying, with what they're saying, and put all that together and make a wise decision.
Jeff, I can ask you just one, one more question in terms of the comprehensive plan and the whole notion of, of infill versus sprawl.
Sure.
This, I mean, in my opinion, this, this rezoning checks a lot of boxes when we look at the comprehensive plan. Is it inside, it is inside the city limits? How does this differ from going into the township? And what would that mean economically?
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good question. Infill has different meanings to different people. So let me define the term. That's basically land that's within the existing city boundaries that has utilities on-site, right? So what that does is it saves cost, right? So you don't have to take the sewer lines and the water lines and the roads as far because it's already within the city boundaries. That keeps the, the building costs down. These guys can tell you what, what 100 feet of sewer line costs, but it's not cheap. You'd be astounded at what the, those costs are now. So infill keeps costs down. It also protects our farmland. We all came here because we like the rural nature of the county, and we like driving past cows, and we like seeing rolling green hills. But people want to come here, right? And we should allow, we should let them come here because we let them come here, right? So like, you know, and cities need more people to pay their bills, and, and employers need more people to do, all that kind of stuff. Infill density, putting houses and people where there's already houses and people is the cheapest way to build and the easiest way to preserve the stuff that we like the most about Knox County.
Just a question from the zoning. If this were to be in the township without utilities, what is the smallest lot that the townships would allow for a single family, if you know that generally?
I, yeah, I do. That's a good question. All of you guys are full of good questions. So because, is it, if it's not sewer-served, which I think is what you're asking about.
It would not be sewer-served.
Yeah, yeah. If it's not sewer-served, the health department requires a minimum of two acres in order to account for septic. So with the addition-
One, one.
One unit.
One year.
Two-acre minimum. With the addition of sanitary sewer, now you can create that density that doesn't gobble up farmland.
Yep. So if this were not built in the city, to get the same number of units, we would be consuming a lot more cornfield.
Yeah, 46 times two. Yep.
Any other questions for Mr. Gotkey? You have had your hand up very patiently. Thank you. Do you want to come up? We're going to wrap the comments then, because the, the commission needs to put this on the table and discuss this.
Do I need to reread this?
You're still under, you're still under oath.
Perfect. State your name, please.
Yeah.
Jennifer Schellman. So I looked up the KNG Equity. I looked up your projects. Not one of them had a residential housing development. It was apartments, it was shopping complexes, it was storage units. So can we please have an example that is relevant? Hopefully, it would be even more beneficial if it was somewhere relatively in this area because going to your website was not super helpful. I would appreciate that, having that data, because it's hard. If the development that we thought was yours is not yours, then we would like to have the actual facts, just like the committee would. It's hard to make a judgment without having that. From the agenda, it did look like Brooks Company. From what we know, Brooks Company is the development and Crestline. That's the local one that we can go look at. That's what we did, doing our due diligence. I also had some comments about the facts that were just presented. I would like to know where the data came from that said, the downsizing of houses was what people wanted. I don't know if it's people want that, or it's what they can afford, because everyone that I know in this area has, unless they fall into that retirement age, they're not looking to downsize. They have families, they have kids, they need to grow their homes. So coming up with a bunch of homes that are smaller, I don't feel like fits the needs, at least anecdotally, what I know about this community and the people that I talk with and the people that I know and what they're looking for in homes. And while I respect that keeping housing developments in the city limits are great, I'm not really concerned with how much it costs the builder because they're here to make a profit. I'm concerned about what it's going to do to our infrastructure. I'm concerned about what it's going to do to the housing around it. Just because it's the cheapest way to build doesn't make it the best way to build. And like I said, from what I was looking at previously, from what I knew of Brooks Company, it looked like it was the cheapest way to build. And I don't believe that's what's best for this community. I don't believe rezoning this land and, and just having it be whatever it's going to be without any actual knowledge is what's best for this community. I can respect the need for growth, and I can respect that there are things that need to be done, but I do think we need to evaluate what's already happening, and we haven't seen the full effects of what's already happening. I don't think that we need to continue growing at a pace just because people want to, can't live in Columbus. Like, those aren't the people that's invested in our community. That's not the community that we want to live in. And I think those are very good considerations to take in account versus just supply and demand. There's a lot of cities around here. They don't have to all come to ours, especially if we cannot support them. Thank you.
For the, if those of you are interested in finding out, I'm going to call, I'm, we need to, we need to move on, we need to move on the, the discussion here. The, the information that Jeff cited, Mr. Gotkey cited, you can go to knoxadf.org. Com, sorry, knoxadf.com. The, and I believe you have citations within the housing study, among other things. Oh, you can search that site, yeah. Okay. That's where the information is. Any other questions for anyone from the table before we-
And I, I think maybe there was a lot of noise at the beginning. Who is the, who is the builder of the single-family residential homes? Because I think there was some noise at the beginning, so I'd like you to just-
If you can go up to the mic, so we get you on the record there.
So it hasn't been determined yet for multiple reasons. This is still concept plans, so depending if it gets reduced or not, we're talking about Schlebaugh, that's who we're currently, you know- People, hang on. He's talking and you're making noise.
He's telling you.
A little bit closer to the mic. People in the back are having trouble hearing.
Slayball Homes is who we're speaking to right now about building the residential part, the single families, possibly the towns of this development.
Thank you. Okay, did everybody hear that? He said Slayball Homes is the folks there discussing building the single family.
Okay. Any other questions from the, this is the last one, last one. We have got to put it on the table here. Go ahead. Come on up. You have to come up here and swear in.
Fairways for 20-plus years.
There is a statement you have to read there first.
Okay. And my big concern is too...
Sir, before you, before you can offer any testimony, you have to read that placard.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay. My name's Gerald Sheffer and I live at 14 Fairway Court in the Fairways. I've lived there for well over 22 years. My major concern is not the construction and everything else, it's people flow in and out of the condos and these new constructions. It's going to be a nightmare.
That's it. Okay, thank you. All right. We're going to end the public comment portion now and let me go through these questions. Mrs. Blankenhorn, with any communications received either through phone calls or writing, we saw some that have been entered as part of this packet. Anything that you would have to add to that?
The communications I received prior to noon were included in the agenda packet published online. There were 12 letters. I did receive a couple emails, or I'm sorry, voicemails. See if I can find them here quickly. Screen's not cool. It's on the screen. I apologize.
I'm coming to you next, Brian, so...
Well, Carol Rednauer, who I believe is in attendance here, called and left a voicemail that she was totally against the proposal for the, before the MPC. Carol and Bruce Boehner, Carol called and left a message, they live at 1092 Beach Street. She does not want any more traffic on her house and she does not want the new development. That were the two, that was the two, oh wait, here's one more. Sherry Breeding from 1076 Beach Street, she wants it to stay R1 and some guy told her to call me and tell me that.
Okay. All right. Okay. I'm going to, let me see. When Mr. Ball gets back, I might skip over to Mr. Boren. From a legal standpoint, and if you can explain the, what we're doing here from the law is there's a good deal of property rights being considered here. And Mr. Boren, can you tell, do you have any legal concerns with the request and advice to the, to the commission based on the information you've heard today?
Well, I would note that a number of the people present have raised the issue that they were here just a few months, well, 11 months ago and they thought that had been decided. We have a different person, they, there's a new owner and that new owner has the absolute right to ask the commission to change it. Whether the commission will will be decided by these fine people and I'm happy I'm not one of them. But just like any of you would have the absolute right to come and ask the commission to either change or allow you to do different things on your property. We cannot stop a new owner from coming before us to ask for a change. I know it's, it's a lot of time for all of you, but it's also a lot of time for us. The requirements for the zoning, which I think you'd thrown up there before, these are what needs to happen for the development, those are the development standards for this. When they're changing it, there are a number of different things that council needs, or council, excuse me.
Move the microphone closer to you then.
Sorry. There are a number of different things that this commission needs to look at when they are, when they're going, number one, one of the bigger things is, is it consistent with other development in the area? And specifically, this is asking for PND, where last time they were asking for R3, there was no R3 zoning around there. There is in fact PND zoning immediately adjacent to this property, specifically the Fairways, is PND zoned. There are the issues about traffic and other things, but those are the main issues before the commission when determining. I would also note that as we've said before, that this is only the very beginning of the process. If this commission, actually, whether this commission chooses to allow the change or to recommend a change in zone to PND, or even if they reject it, either of those decisions will go in, go in fact, go in front of council for their decision to either agree or disagree with the commission. If this commission agrees or recommends the change and council does not disapprove of that choice, then the developer will have to return with a full site plan. And the site plan will require all of the property, what's going to happen with all of the property. And it cannot be approved until all of that is presented to municipal planning and we'll have another, and should we get that far, we'll have another meeting just like this one, very likely in this same room. And people will have the opportunity to speak about this specific site plan at that point rather than just the concept drawing we're dealing with here. And even if this commission chooses to recommend approval of a full site plan, that decision will then be sent on to council, which will once again have to either ratify or disapprove of the decision of this commission.
And again, Mr. Salier said that the PND is more restrictive than the R3 and the R1. Is that correct?
What?
Or there's more control, I guess I should say.
Yeah, I would disagree with the description of it being more restrictive. There are significantly more controls for the city over development in a planned neighborhood development. Because the city has more controls, the developer can do many more different things, but all of that is, comes with the ability of the city to control that much more.
Mr. Ball, engineering concerns that you would have.
Yeah, so the site does have reasonable access to all city utilities. There, there is a way to get the stormwater away from the site. That's up to the developer to, to do that, but there are adequately sized storm drains that would not involve going across private properties that have homes on them. You know, the, there are some, we realize that, you know, people speak a lot about the traffic on Coshockton Avenue. We are constantly maintaining the traffic signals. There are some problems with those and we've, we're going to be doing upgrades over the next several years. You know, part of this would be, the developer would enter an agreement where they do a traffic study. There's no point, I mean, part of it is where we are in time, right? This piece of private property, there is not a point for the developer to invest in a traffic study when they don't, I mean, without, without some assurance that they're going to go to the next step. So some of these questions about traffic will be answered, but that's more before the next, the next step, or if there, if there is that next step. So if they were to, you know, those questions would be answered. Also, the stormwater, this is not a design, they will have to do, if someone builds here, they would have to do a detailed design and meet the standards. Sometimes we're seeing that the EPA standards are so high, they're actually reducing downstream flooding in some cases. But we won't know that. They will not be allowed to increase downstream flooding. So it would either have to be what it is now or slightly better.
And the other, at this point, shade tree would not be, would be contacted or a part of this, that would come.
That comes with an, if, like I said, for this, for this stage, shade tree does not need to be involved, but those rules have been updated and are being enforced. So we are, the other subdivisions, we're inventorying the trees, we're looking at the quality of the trees and we're enforcing that, that tree replacement policy.
Thank you. Any questions from the commission before we put it out on the table?
Am I allowed to ask a question of Mr. Ball?
Sure.
So, Mr. Ball, you mentioned Coshockton and the traffic there, but I've heard a lot of the citizens here talk about Vernon View Drive and curious if there's any, sorry. I've heard a lot of the audience members here talk about Vernon View Drive and I'm curious if that is under, and I know, I understand the developer and the builder would have to undergo the traffic study, but is there any other discussion around that road in particular at this moment, as there has been around like Upper Gilcrest?
So in the next couple of days, we are going to apply for a grant that we're most likely to get to do a citywide study. We have not specifically studied State Route 768 recently. That, the study that we're working off is 2016, but we are looking to apply for funds to do a citywide study. We did talk today about potential upgrades to the traffic signal at Coshockton Avenue and 768. This, there have been several requests to think about traffic signals somewhere in this area and in this new study we would be kicking off, we would look at the Beach Street intersection, looking at putting a traffic signal or making some traffic update to that intersection because of these, you know, backups we're seeing, we're seeing, you know, we're not seeing those in every neighborhood, but this is an area that it's time for us to look at again. As many people may remember, we synchronized the traffic lights downtown. We believe that's made a pretty significant improvement. You know, with our funding, we're not doing those basically all at once. We're kind of focusing on, on those areas. So that's something we would be doing.
Mr. Boren, anything to add to what Mr. Ball had? Does that answer your question? Anyway, okay.
I have nothing to add.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions before we put it to the floor? Okay, we will entertain a motion.
There is no time limit, sir.
I'll make, I'll make the motion for discussion.
I gotta make it down. Oh. I'll, I'll...
Okay.
Do me a favor.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the rezone from R1 to PND, this parcel.
Is there a second?
No, I make a motion to rezone this, this parcel from R1 to PND.
We will need a second.
Or, Rob, is that the proper, okay.
Yes, that's acceptable.
It's been motioned and seconded for the rezoning of this parcel from R1 to PND. Any discussion?
So, yes, so I, a couple things. So I have a lot of concerns with the traffic patterns. You know, as a, obviously a Mount Vernon resident, you know, driving down this road many times, you know, going to, you know, turning, you know, right or left out of Kroger or Buffalo Wild Wings, it's a very dangerous intersection. The light there on Vernon View and Coshockton Avenue, the traffic flow there is already very congested. You know, Mr. Hillier brought up a previous comment. I do want to say, you know, I did second the motion for this discussion because I want to make it very clear to the group that's bringing this, that I am vehemently opposed to any, anything that is below the standard of an R1. So in other words, I, if or when, if this gets approved and you come back with other developments, I would not support any apartments. Essentially, I believe it would need to be kept in a similar fashion as if it were an R1. And so I, again, in the current plan that's laid out, I personally would vote no. I would not support any, I don't want to say Connors or Townhomes, but I would be, I would need a strong argument and definitely not apartments. So I guess I don't want to waste your time if you really want apartments because I do, I would not support that. The phase two, I have a big problem with, so.
I would also echo those sentiments. I believe that community has been there for, for years, the people that purchased those homes, purchased to live in a community that, you know, they could expect if there was any development in this area, it would look similar. That said, you know, someone said, "If I could, I'd buy the property and fence it in." Well, you have the opportunity to buy the property. But situation is, you know, it is yours, but it's ours to make the decision on what's best for Mount Vernon. The traffic concerns are considerable. It's hard to turn left out of Wendy's. I've been to Wendy's a few times. So...
It's hard to turn out of Kroger.
It's hard to turn anywhere on Coshockton Avenue. We are not blind to that fact. Tried to make several efforts to fix traffic around here. We've got a lot of things in the pipeline and adding even more to Vernon View may not necessarily help things, but that will depend on your site plan. So similarly to Mr. Hawkins, I'm going to vote yes to give you an opportunity, but second part of this, I, I don't know that I can get behind.
I agree with Mr. Hawkins and Mr. Salier's. I think that we've done, I think there's some really amazing growth going on in Mount Vernon. I'm not sure this is the plot of land to do this type of growth on, based on traffic. Getting a little concerned about the school system and what's going to happen with over density in our schools as well. So I guess my question perhaps is whether this is approved as PND, do we have to go with different types of housing or is it okay to stick with just one versus another if the developer comes back with a revised plan?
Why don't I take that question? The question is, while PND allows for multiple different development uses, it is not required. So it is quite possible to do a series of single-family homes on a PND lot. Specifically, we have seen PND used to do single-family homes, but then to do some sort of community amenities such as a clubhouse and other things for the housing unit, for the housing units there, which would not typically be allowed in an R1-zoned area.
Thank you.
Jason, any questions?
No.
I would just like to also add, we've, I also, I always tell people, there are two ways that I know of that you can raise funds for a municipality. You can either get more people contributing to the revenue streams or you can raise taxes and fees. With all of the things that we have going on that are breaking, that we need to fix and we know we need roads, we need to fix our current roads, we need to fix, we need to provide new roads, how do we pay for that? If this development were to take it to the township, guess what? We're still going to have the traffic, but we will not have the revenue. And so that's going to fall on you all because the only other option is to reduce services and I don't think we all want to do that. And so from an economic standpoint and a longevity and our own sustainability, it checks many boxes, not to mention we would insist on sidewalks and being able to walk to, walk to Kroger maybe, and the other retail area. The other thing that we, we've been hearing a lot about is why can't you get us more This would probably bring some more attention to the, to the commercial and the restaurant and, and this is, this is something, retail follows rooftops. It's just, I don't pick the restaurants that come here or the car washes or anything else. That's not my job. I make sure that the zoning is, that what is built in the zoning is what, is what is done. And lastly...
And, and lastly, I hope you all understand that when we took office, when we took this, this role up here, and then Mr. Boren and I as elected officials, we swore an oath to uphold the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution and laws of the State of Ohio, and the ordinances of the City of Mount Vernon. And that's what our job is to do, and there is a major Fifth Amendment right here that these gentlemen are, are asking for. In my opinion, it checks a lot of boxes. I think it does provide the city more control in terms of the, managing the growth, so that we can contain it and harness the revenue streams that would be here. And by the way, I did speak with Bill Cedar about this, he knows. I gave him a heads up from the Mount Vernon City School District, and so he is aware of this. And, but I told him again, this is only the rezoning, there is nothing, that's the only decision that we would be making at this point. We would have, if, if the commission decides to vote for this, then we would consider more of those other things with the, the school system and so forth. So there are a lot of, there's, there would, it's definitely pending the vote here, a lot more work to, to do, but yeah, it's a, it's, I just, I want to make sure that this commission and the city does not step on their rights as, this gentleman's rights as a property owner. So that's what I wanted to say, and I don't know if anybody else has anything to add to that. Mr. Boren, am I off on any of those with regard to the legal?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion?
Just to remind you.
This is, this is for, sorry, this is just for the board.
Just for the rezoning.
This is just for the rezoning.
Which will then go to council, and they will have a decision. Then it will come back to, it will come back to us for the site plan, which we will go through several, if it's anything like the Lemon Development, for instance.
Pending the vote.
We will go through several iterations, and then we will vote, which will then go back to council. So in no way does this end tonight. No way.
Any other discussion? What was the?
So for Tanner, if they do not choose to come back, then it could, this one could end.
Well, with that one caveat, yeah, they could.
We don't have any guarantee.
They could head out of here.
Going to reapply for a, the next step.
That would be on them, though.
Am I allowed to ask another question of the developer?
Yeah, sure. Go ahead.
If Slay Ball is not interested or willing to do this, are you committed to working with another local builder? I'm sorry?
Would you come and, and speak into the mic so you're part of the record there?
So we've actually already spoken to three others.
Local?
Yes.
Okay.
I would like to thank everybody for their time. I actually have to go. So, thank you, I appreciate it. I'm sure we'll be back many more times. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everyone.
Any other discussion? Mrs. Blankenhorn, please call the roll.
Mayor Starr.
Yes.
Mr. Salyers.
Yes.
Mrs. Ellsworth.
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins.
Yes.
Mr. West.
No.
We have a four to one vote in approval.
We have a four to one vote for approval. That will, so this will then be recommended to City Council for approval at, will we have enough time to get it before the? We'll get it to City Council next, so, go ahead.
No, we're just trying to.
Okay. Quiet, please, before we, we end this. So is there any other order of business? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded for adjournment. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Pose nay. We are adjourned.